The September 5th, 2023 Legislative Session of the Annapolis County Council is called to order. Please ensure all cell phones and electronic devices are set to silent. invocation, Ms. Ledbetter? I will turn it over to you.
Thank you. Please stand. Please pray in the manner consistent with your faith and beliefs, as I pray in the manner consistent with mine. Lord, we thank you for bringing us here together tonight for the opportunity to serve the communities in which we live, work, and play. Hold us as leaders, help us as leaders. Ask not how do we fix this, but what do we need to learn and to whom do we need to listen? Grant us the wisdom and courage to know what is right and good and true. May we be guided by the Spirit of community, the Spirit of justice, and the Spirit of love. In this, we pray in your name. Amen.
The Ethics Commission has asked that I advise you that under certain circumstances, members of the public may qualify as lobbyists when they testify before the county council. If so, the law requires that certain information be filed with the Ethics Commission. The Chair of the Ethics Commission has asked that those who wish to testify in any form review the general information on lobbying sheet located on the Ethics website under forms and publications. If there are any questions about lobbying requirements, please contact the Ethics Commission at 410-222-4413.
All right. We'll now open our invitation to the audience. I didn't see anyone that signed up in advance, but this is an opportunity to speak briefly on any subject that is not included on the printed agenda. Madam Secretary, did we receive any testimony through the online testimonial tool?
Mr. Chair, members of the council, we did not receive anything ahead of time.
As I stated, I didn't see anyone that signed up beforehand. Is there anyone here who now wishes to speak? Please come up to the table and state your name, address, and the topic before making your remarks. Remarks will be limited to two minutes. Sir, over to you.
Michael Brown, Tannert Springs, Glenburn, Maryland. I have a couple different topics this evening. First one is Tannert Springs Park. We recently had a meeting with Rexon Parks on this. There's been a lot of outcry against this park, especially since there's a park down the street that is hardly used. But I think a lot of people think that the answers that were provided by Rexon Parks and potentially DPW were kind of a shrug off, and no thought went into those answers. Tannert Springs Lane from Solly Road to Tannert Knoll, that is cut every so often by the county. Last time it was done, it was haphazardly done. It looked early like crap. There were still weeds six-plus inches high. Can the county do better? Or can a resident go out and cut that if it gets too much? I understand the county only cuts a portion of that area because of the properties the other side is owned by another property owner, but we've got to do better with that. And I just want to compliment the county on the new website. I'm an IT guy myself. It looks really nice, and I think the content management system that you guys are using for that will make the overall administration of that pretty easy. Thank you.
Thank you. Madam Secretary, I see you.
P.O. Box 6634, Annapolis, Maryland. Tonight's pretty short. At the next council meeting, I have two quiz questions for you. It's a pop quiz, so of course you don't have any idea that it's coming, and you have no idea what the two questions are. Question one is, what is a critical corridor in Annapolis County? And question two is, how does it become a critical corridor? And is there any way to make it uncritical and get it out of the plan? Okay? Now, the other thing I want, the reason I came tonight is I really wanted to compliment this county council for the last meeting. It was an extraordinary demonstration of honest-to-goodness democracy in action. You know, as I arrived, here are a group of citizens who object to a bill. They're outside, they have cool t-shirts, they're rallying, they come in, they're well behaved, and here we have an honest-to-goodness difference of opinion in how these issues should be resolved. And everybody was polite, courageous, came, held their ground, listened, and it was just, just wonderful. The emotional range from the citizen witnesses ranged from really intense joy that they had now been able to, you know, they were in charge. They were no longer suffering from their addictions. They had jobs, families, kids, and the joy of that recovery was so great. And then we had a few where we heard the sorrow of the loss of family members because they didn't get the treatment. And then we had council members saying, we've got to take leadership and tackle this problem again. We need, you know, a task force or something similar. So I wanted to compliment you and say thank you to all of you.
Thank you. Appreciate you. I see no one else coming towards the table. Invitation to the audience is now closed. Is there any item any council member would like to place on the agenda?
Mr. Chair, I move to reconsider the vote on Bill 61-23.
Is there a second?
Second.
Madam Secretary, please call the roll on the motion to reconsider the vote on Bill number 6123.
Just a point of order. Does the second need to be from someone who is also on the prevailing side, or can the second be from anyone?
The second can be from anyone, just the initial motion.
Aye.
Mr. Volkey.
Aye.
Ms. Hummer.
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler.
Nay.
Ms. Radvian.
Aye.
Ms. Ledbetter.
Nay.
And Mr. Smith.
Aye.
That's four in the affirmative, three in the negative. The motion to reconsider the vote on Bill number 6123 has been passed.
All right. So just a point of order here, are we voting now specifically on the, or is there discussion?
Sure, it's whenever you'd like. It was set up so that we do the preliminary motion first to allow the partial reading and just the title, but I think we could do it now if that's what you would like to do.
Well, please read the title of Bill number 6123.
Bill number 6123, An Ordnance Concerning Construction and Property Maintenance Codes, Fire Prevention Code, Codes and Supplements, Zoning Recovery Residences.
Open this up for discussion. Do you want to?
Thank you, yeah, if I might speak to my motion. So if you were present at our last meeting, you may recall that at the very end of the meeting, I made a motion to hold the vote because I wanted more time to consider Bill That motion failed, but then I realized that I had this option as well. I spent a significant amount of time since that past meeting, meeting with additional recovery house operators and visiting recovery houses, as well as having many conversations today. I think I spent most of my afternoon on the phone with different folks talking about this, and I've come to the conclusion that I think this is a helpful bill. I know that there is another bill being introduced on this topic tonight. I do not believe they are mutually exclusive. I think one tackles one particular issue that is important for allowing some of our operators to go forward, and I believe that the bill that is being introduced, at least the draft that I've seen, has a lot of value and will be very worth our discussion. So I do not see them as mutually exclusive. So for that reason, and after reconsidering or having further time to consider 61-23, I'm bringing it back for a vote, and I hope my colleagues will consider supporting the bill at this time.
Any additional discussion? Mr. Volkey.
I just have a question. So I understand, Mr. Chair, I think you may sit on the Board of Crystal House as well as on Evolve. Has there been an apparent conflict of interest disclosure filed with the Ethics Commission, and are you permitted to participate in the debate and vote on this bill?
So for Evolve, I am not on their board for Evolve. For Crystal House, I have, and so in 2017, 2016, when I first got on there, there was an active opinion created during that timeframe that spoke about different pieces of legislation, and I received clearance then that I could serve in that capacity. It's a volunteer. I haven't participated in any board discussions in the last four months, five months, with that entity, and so I've received clearance then, and no issue with that. Any other discussion? Please.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I would just say that I appreciate Ms. Johnson's comments reflecting on our last meeting and the very thoughtful conversations that we had in regards to 6123. My position is still that we all made a commitment to create a task force to really dive deep into this and have a consensus among the majority of council members. To my knowledge, that task force has not been established, and I, at this time, am not willing to go back on that commitment to go about this in a more holistic, thoughtful way, so I will not be supporting the bill once more.
Madam Vice Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I know from that very robust conversation we had at the second meeting in July regarding this topic, I do need to point out that the main provisions, the whole point, the whole parts of Bill 6123 had been absorbed into the sort of competing bill of 5523 that we voted on, this body voted on unanimously. So I feel comfortable, and as Ms. Radvian stated, I think this 6123 tackles a part of our code that has been lacking in defining recovery residences and creating a path forward through the process to certification with EMCOR. I think any further discussion or any other additional issues regarding the recovery continuum can be addressed in subsequent bills, whether those introduced tonight or thereafter. I think they can build upon 6123 while also allowing certification of recovery residences to go forward in a codified way. So I would ask for the support of 6123 as I did back in July. Thank you.
Mr. Volkey.
It's been pointed out to members of this body by a lot of the people in the recovery community that this bill is not needed for anyone except, I think there's one provider who is in the midst of EMCOR certifications, and that provider actually supports the new iteration of the bill that I'm introducing tonight. Actually, I think what this does is correct some issues in the county where there are some recovery residences and/or group homes that are having some problems with zoning. So that's actually what this does. So to be clear for the record, this isn't about EMCOR certification for recovery residences. This is about some county zoning issues. And I would just point out to my colleagues, you all have gotten the entreaties from many in the recovery community, significant, you know, impactful people in the recovery community who represent large swaths of recovery beds and the folks who are doing the recovery work. They've asked that this bill not be passed. They've asked that you consider looking at the bill that I'm going to introduce this evening, but I understand everybody's got to make their own vote and kind of go with their own conscience, but I will just point out that you have heard from the recovery community loud and clear, and the vast majority of providers in the recovery community have asked you not to pass this bill.
Ms. Ledbetter.
Oh, go ahead. You were before me. Thank you. The reason why I voted against the motion to reintroduce is also going to be a large part of the reason why my vote on this is not going to change. There was no public notice that we were going to be reconsidering this. We had a room full of testimony and people coming out and using their voice. We don't have that tonight. To me, it just doesn't, I know it is within the rules of this council to do what we're doing. I don't second guess that whatsoever. It's just, to me, it doesn't feel like the most transparent way to go about governance. And so with that in mind, I'm going to, that's why I voted against the motion, but it's also a big portion for why I'm going to stick to the vote that I made that night when I had all of that public testimony and the input in front of me, and it was fresh, and I'm going to stay there.
Thank you. I take issue with that characterization because the bill that we'd be voting on or that we will be voting on tonight is the identical bill that the public had all the opportunity and obviously used it quite well at our last meeting. And the new information was not information brought, it was information that I sought out and maybe other individuals sought out. So I don't feel, I certainly am, you know, very supportive of transparency. I don't think there's anything untransparent about, it's the identical bill. There's nothing new here. We're not springing any surprises. You know, the testimony that we heard in July still stands, you know, and is still part of the record for this bill and this vote.
Madam Secretary, please call the roll.
Ms. Pickard.
Aye.
Mr. Volkey.
Aye.
Ms. Hummer.
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler.
Nay.
Ms. Radvian.
Aye.
Ms. Ledbetter.
Nay.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
Four in the affirmative, three in the negative. Bill number 6123 has been passed.
All right. May I have a motion that a partial reading of any bail or resolution amendment to a bill or resolution where minutes constitutes the reading of the whole?
So moved. Allison Pickard.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, motion carries. Madam Secretary, please read the minutes of July 17, 2023.
Minutes of July 17, 2023. The county council meeting was called to order by Chair Smith at 7:00 PM. It was opened with the invocation given by Ms. Radvian and was followed by the pledge of allegiance. The meeting was held in the county council chambers in Annapolis, Maryland.
May I have a motion to approve the minutes of July 17, 2023?
So moved. Allison Pickard.
Is there a second?
Second. Julie Hummer.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. The minutes of July 17, 2023 stand approved as read. Madam Secretary, please read the titles of the bills to be introduced this evening.
Bill number 6723, An Ordnance Concerning Pensions, Personnel, Public Ethics, Positions in the Classified Service, Positions in the Exempt Service. Bill number 6823, An Ordnance Concerning Personnel, Retiree Health Benefits Trust, Agreements, Public Entities. Bill number 6923, An Ordnance Concerning Zoning, General Provisions, Amendments to Comprehensive Zoning Ordinance. Bill number 7023, An Ordnance Concerning Approval of the Lease Between Annapolis County and Addiction Recovery, Inc., Doing Business as Hope House Treatment Center. Bill number 7123, An Ordnance Concerning Public Safety, Fire Services, Emergency Management. Bill number 7223, An Ordnance Concerning Crimes, Civil Offenses and Fines, Weapons, Discharge of Firearms. Bill number 7323, An Ordnance Concerning Subdivision and Development, Site Development, Exemptions, Improvements to Existing Structures, Cumulative Floor Area and Impervious Surface. Bill number 7423, An Ordnance Concerning Construction and Property Maintenance Codes, Codes and Supplements, Fire Prevention Code, Zoning, Group Homes, Community-Based Assisted Living Facilities, and Recovery Residences.
Madam Secretary, please read the titles of resolutions to be introduced this evening.
Resolution number 3323, Resolution Approving the Nominations for Appointment to the Stakeholder Advisory Committee for Region Planning Area Number One. Resolution number 3423, Resolution Approving the Nominations for Appointment to the Stakeholder Advisory Committee for Region Planning Area Number Three. Resolution number 3523, Resolution Approving the Nominations for Appointment to the Stakeholder Advisory Committee for Region Planning Area Number Nine. Resolution number 3623, Resolution Confirming the Appointments of Annapolis County Residents to Serve on the Spending Affordability Committee. Resolution number 3723, Resolution Confirming the Appointment of a Member to Serve on the Personnel Board for Annapolis County. Resolution number 3823, Resolution Approving the Nomination of Members to the Annapolis County Human Relations Commission. Resolution number 3923, Resolution Nominating a Member to Serve on the Annapolis County Ethics Commission.
All right. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill number 5223.
Bill number 5223, An Ordnance Concerning Zoning Solar Energy Generating Facilities.
All right. Mr. Hunt, Mr. Barron.
I'm so sorry to interrupt. This is Bill 5323, yes?
Fifty.
Okay.
I'm sorry. You're right, 5323.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Ethan Hunt, City Administrator, would be at the table. I have the Office of Planning and Voting, and Kelly from the Office of Law.
Bill 5323 adds rooftop-mounted only solar generating facilities as conditional uses in additional commercial zoning districts C1, C2, and C3. It also exempts solar generating facilities on county-owned or leased property, sanitary landfills, reclamation areas, and rooftops from specified lock coverage limitations. Bill also exempts rooftop-mounted-only facilities from certain conditional use requirements, modifies solar energy generating facility special exceptions related to property coverage and location, and creates additional exemptions for county-owned or leased properties. Bill also clarifies that facilities that require a certificate of public need from the Maryland Public Service Commission are not required to comply with certain county special exception and conditional use requirements. This is primarily a rooftop solar bill, and I know there's been lots of discussion about ground-mounted agricultural land solar facilities as well, and I just want to reemphasize that this is an important bill for the administration to enable the development and implementation of rooftop solar facilities. We have several projects that are waiting for this bill to pass, and once it's effective, they'll be able to move forward. Regarding agricultural land, we are going to be doing a full assessment countywide, reviewing what our agencies have done up to this point, and have a full needs assessment done of the county so that we can ensure that we protect sensitive land, map out the potential locations for where ground-based solar facilities could be feasible, and that we leave any agricultural land in the best possible shape. So with that, I'm happy to take any questions.
Any additional comments from the council? Seeing no lights, we will now open the public hearing on Bill number 5323. Madam Secretary, did we receive any testimony through the online testimonial tool?
Mr. Chair, we did not receive anything ahead of time.
I don't see anyone that signed up in advance. Is there anyone in the audience who wish to speak on Bill 5323? We have one. Please come up at this time, and then we will close the public hearing on 5323. Please state your name and address for the record, and two minutes.
I'm Officer Carter Barrett, Al Cosmo, Noone here in Annapolis. I know I've met with many of you and appeared before you previously with regard to this bill. All I'd like to say is that my client Centennial Generating Company, which I provided you background to, is very excited about getting started here in Annapolis County. They're one of the ones that Mr. Hunt, I think, noted is in the process of getting things lined up to be able to get a permit and be able to put in rooftop solar systems, which they're one of the premier operators of those facilities in the country. From a land use perspective, rooftop solar, I think everybody agrees that that's probably one of the more efficient and effective and environmentally friendly ways to do it. You're getting that additional energy through a different source, and you're not having any disruption of the land or anything like that. So hopefully, we request and are hopeful that you all will pass the bill tonight because 45 days from today, our people will be ready to roll. And again, we think this is just a smart, efficient way to do things, and appreciate all of your time and efforts in doing so.
Thank you. All right. So the, are you coming up?
Yes.
Please come up at this time.
Good evening. My name is Adam Dubitsky. I'm with the Land and Liberty Coalition of Maryland. Our concern with this bill is that, is not that it helps rooftop solar, it certainly does, and we need as much solar as possible. Our concern with this bill is that it does so really at the expense of community solar. Community solar is already very, very difficult in this county to do. What this would effectively do is make it impossible in many cases. Changing the soil definitions, there's been discussion of that about what that would do in terms of putting another layer of restrictions on ground-mounted solar. The fact is, in the state, is that we are slipping further and further behind meeting our targets in terms of the solar carve-out. It's without a doubt that we cannot do this without using a portion of ag land for solar. There are discussions about what solar would do to ag land. I believe a lot of those studies are inaccurate. If you took just 1.8% of the 2 million acres in Maryland, for example, for solar that are now ag land, we would more than hit our target. Community solar can be done, and ground-mounted solar can be done in a way that protects the land, far from harming the bay or farm or water supplies. You're not putting the fertilizer on the land, you're not putting the pesticides on the land, you're not running traffic and tractors over it for 25 years. In fact, it's been proven that ag land is actually restored if it is done effectively with solar. For farm families, often this means that they're able to keep the farm and the family for another generation and do with it. And one thing I think people on both sides of the aisle, and whether they're urban, suburban, or rural, can agree on is that there is a problem with urban sprawl and overdevelopment in certain areas, and the need to protect rural areas. And even when solar is not the first choice in an area, it does that. It funds county priorities without requiring new ones. It doesn't require new schools, doesn't require new sewers, electricity, broadband, fire police, yet it helps to pay for these priorities. And what we're not talking about is opening up the entire South County, all our rural areas that we do need to preserve for solar, but simply giving some farmers the opportunity to use a portion of their land for this, done in a responsible way with screening and setbacks. I think it's something that's not incompatible with our rural heritage in rural areas, but can help both the county, the state, and also the climate.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Ms. Johnson.
Julie Johnson, P.O. Box 6634, Annapolis, Maryland. My concern is that for years, there are a lot of us who have looked at the solar arrays that are up at the community college. They simply shaded the parking lot, and from the point of view of, you know, the solid impervious pavements, you know, this provides shade so they don't, you know, catch the heat and store it, and then we radiate it all night long so that there are benefits to using our parking lots. And we have, there are so many all around this county, and I think that for some of these people who own these parking lots, they would be persuaded, just, you know, from the maintenance points of view, to be, you know, be pursuing, you know, the use of the solar panels. I still have this problem, though, that is, I understand the problem with, or a major problem with solar is that when you try to put it into the grid, you know, maintaining the same voltage, the same kick, making it, you know, equal without causing loops and jumps and things, you know, that's the tricky part. And so I'm not sure that this bill addresses that. I would have no clue about how to do that, but I think it's something that we still need to be talking about. Thanks so much.
Thank you. All right, public hearing on Bill number 5323 is now closed. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill number 5323.
Bill number 5323, An Ordnance Concerning Zoning Solar Energy Generating Facilities.
Mr. Hunt, just to validate one more time, this bill is not impacting any ground-based sort of, submitted bill, is impacting any ground-based businesses or processes that are currently in place now?
I don't think so.
All right, okay.
I just want to state for the record, I'm very torn about this bill, because it sort of pits one environmental concern against another environmental concern, and I think they're both enormously important. We have to get away from fossil fuels, solar power is a wonderful way to do that. We also need to preserve farmland, and we need to make sure that we're taking care of our soil, and, you know, I think our county has been generally a good player in that regard. So I want to support this bill, but I'm concerned about the 10-mile radius that's currently, that, you know, by my calculation at the last meeting, basically creates a ban of community solar for, I would say, probably most of South County. And I just don't think that that's a realistic proposition. I think one of our folks that just testified mentioned that, you know, we won't be able to meet our renewable energy goals if we really completely ban. So I would like, I would like to support tonight's, the bill that's before us, even though it has a provision that I'm not really crazy about, I wish weren't there, because I would like us to be able to move forward with the rooftop solar projects that are, you know, I think, very much in the pipeline. But I hope I have colleagues who would also commit to coming up with a better balance for South County, rather than a complete, you know, what amounts to a complete ban of community solar, smaller solar projects. You know, obviously, someone can go through the Public Service Commission, but I don't know, actually, can someone remind me, is that even an option for community solar, or is that up to, or is that over a certain?
I believe it's over a...
Oh. Kelly Kenny, Supervising County Attorney, I didn't think I'd have to come back up. Yes, it is for over a certain amount, you have to go before the Public Service Commission. So even community solar, if they generate enough power, does need that approval. So for large projects, they might have the ability to do that, but I don't think we want to hamper, we don't want to hamper projects to force them to go through that process. We need to be facilitating solar and not, you know, creating more obstacles. So I hope that my colleagues, I would love it if you would state it on the record, you're willing to work with me to help come up with a better balance than a 10-mile radius that basically creates a ban for a large part of our county. So I'm going to support the bill tonight, but I'd love the support of my colleagues on working on that ban and a better balance.
Ms., Madam Vice Chair, I don't want to first.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I 100% concur with my colleague from District Six. I too, I intend to support this bill tonight with wanting to note the frustration of the ground-mounted solar issue that is, it's not addressed directly in this bill, it's just being perpetuated through not addressing it in this bill. So I want to make sure that we're moving forward on the roof-mounted situations that are ready to go, and we do need a commitment both from the administration and our colleagues here to find that right balance that works on the compromise between our agricultural land, our farmers, and our climate crisis goals and community solar, if we're going to, if we're going to keep moving forward in a positive light. So I know Mr. Hunt is going to secure that commitment as soon as he gets the chance to speak into that microphone, so I'll yield my time.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I echo a lot of the sentiments of my colleague, Ms. Radvian. If this bill only had rooftop solar, I know exactly where I would be this evening, incredibly torn, hearing from land-based solar folks, and how incredibly challenging it is right now in the county. And I have some concerns over language that I supported in an amendment at the last meeting, having some unintended consequences. So I hear both sides, and difficult decision this evening, so.
Ms. Ledbetter.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So, Mr. Hunt, I know we have had extensive conversations about this bill. I know, besides talking to the administration yourself, I have taken the time to talk to a variety of stakeholders, both on the solar side, and the ag side, and the community. And the one thing I can speak to for every single stakeholder that I have spoken to across the board has been a very much a desire and a willingness to come together to find what would be a comprehensive, long-term county plan for addressing what we're going to do with ground-based solar going forward. I know I'm committed to being part of that conversation, I don't want to speak for the administration, I'm going to let Mr. Hunt do that, but I do think the common ground here, while folks may have different acknowledged end visions and goals of what this ground policy may or may not look like, I can speak confidently that I, my sense is that the common ground here is that everyone is committed to coming to the table and working on this together, so that we can come up with a piece of legislation that the seven of us on this council and the administration can unite behind and feel really good about. And I know I'm committed to that, and so I think that this bill is worth supporting as is. Let's get moving on what we need to do to do the right thing for the rooftop solar, and I'll speak to my commitment, and I'll, yeah, let Mr. Hunt speak to the administration's commitment to working, going forward together.
Ms. Hummer.
Yes, I just echo what everyone says. I'm going to support this bill for the rooftop, knowing that that's the main focus of it, but I'm fully supportive of us moving forward sooner rather than later, that we don't need a work group or a roundtable that takes a year or more. We need to do this, we need to get moving on this so that we can be using, meeting our goals best we can, and helping our small farmers who may want to pursue this. So a full commitment on there, so all on you, Mr. Hunt.
Thank you, Councilmember. The administration is fully committed.
...forward that we can all unite behind to address this issue.
And Ms. Canadis, maybe you can help me, you might be able to as well. So the provision, the solar energy generating facility community section in the legislation, while my, at least my interpretation of that, when I was speaking to folks previously, was that, so why was that provision even put on this, in this bill?
Kelly County Supervising County Attorney, are you talking about the amendment to the definition?
Yeah, it was the amendment to Section 1811-158, on page...
Oh, the special exception?
Yes, the requirements for special exception use.
And then which change are you asking about?
Well, that particular block, Title 11, so while the focus was rooftop, putting in the special exception use language, which I think confused some folks, and there's a particular portion in there, which I know the, some of the folks who were concerned about the ground-based, or at least the agricultural piece of it, I guess it's paragraph 8I. It's line 25, on page four.
Line 25, so that was, that language was added in as an amendment that was adopted the last time.
Except this provision.
So that was not, you're talking about the addition in line number 25 through 27?
Yes.
Right, that was added in as an amendment the last time. That would change the, it basically struck, we, the original bill had struck the language with the 10-mile restriction, and that added that language back in.
Check.
By that amendment the last time. Yeah.
Okay.
Ms. Miller is going to clarify, where special exception solar is allowed.
Right. Lynn Miller, I was just adding that when that was added into subsection 8, it's clarifying that it only applies within the RA zoning district, which is actually the only zoning district for which this is a special exception use.
Right.
If that makes sense.
No, it does. So as you were contemplating or developing the bill for rooftops, because there were special exceptions, potentially roofs down in RA, this provision had to be in there?
Well, because the desire was for the 10-mile limitation not to apply to rooftop solar, but only to apply to ground-mounted solar.
Check. But for the record, I am certainly too willing to be a part, whatever group is necessary to achieve, I guess, ease the friction or concerns with folks that are in the agricultural area, whose land this might impact potentially, so I am on board with that, but, oh, thank you. Any additional questions on 5323? Seeing none. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill Number 5323.
Bill Number 5323, An Ordnance Concerning Zoning Solar Energy Generating Facilities.
Any final discussions? Seeing none. Please call the roll on 5323.
Ms. Pickard.
Aye.
Mr. Volkey. Ms. Hummer.
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler.
Again, if this were just a rooftop solar bill, I would be very comfortable giving my support to this legislation. I have too many concerns about the other sections of the bill to vote comfortably tonight, affirmative or negative, so I am also abstaining.
Ms. Radvian.
Based on the commitments of my colleagues to make sure that we address the needs of coming up with a better balance for solar going forward in rural parts of the county, including agricultural parts of the county, I'm going to vote aye.
Ms. Ledbetter.
Aye.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
Five in the affirmative, two abstentions, Bill Number 5323 has been passed.
Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill Number 6223.
Bill Number 6223, An Ordnance Concerning Subdivision and Development Zoning Farm Dual Uses.
Mr. Hunt.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. With me at the table, I have Lynn Miller from the Office of Planning and Zoning, and Lori Blair Klosmeyer from the Office of Law. This legislation was proposed by the County Agricultural Commission with the intent of allowing additional commercial uses on a farm property to supplement the farm income and increase the economic viability of farming. The bill will allow a limited range of heavy commercial uses such as contractors on a site of at least 20 acres in size, and on which the principal use is farming. The commercial use is also limited to 20,000 square feet. Other conditional use requirements are included to protect against any adverse impacts to adjoining residential properties. We do have one administration amendment that we'll ask the council to adopt at the appropriate time.
Any questions on Bill Number 6223 at this time? Seeing none, we'll now open the public hearing on Bill Number 6223. Madam Secretary, did we receive any testimony through the online testimonial tool?
We did, we received one submission ahead of time on Bill 6223, and that is posted in the summary that's included online. The council members all should have received a copy, and it will be added to the record.
Is there, I didn't see anyone that signed up in advance to sign up, is there anyone in the audience who opened up the public hearing wishes to speak on Bill Number 6223? All right, seeing no movements, public hearing on Bill Number 6223 is now closed. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill Number 6223.
Bill Number 6223, An Ordnance Concerning Subdivision and Development Zoning Farm Dual Uses.
And I see there is an amendment. Madam Secretary, please read Amendment Number One.
Amendment Number One, this amendment makes the effective date of the bill contingent upon approval of the Maryland Critical Area Commission.
Thank you, Chairman. As Ms. Corby stated, the bill, the amendment just changes the effective date to make it contingent on having approval from the Critical Area Commission, and this was a recommendation, I believe, of the Office of Law.
All right, is there a motion to adopt?
Radvian, so moved. Second, Allison Pickard.
All right, any comments from the council on this motion? Madam Secretary, please recall the roll on Amendment Number One.
Ms. Pickard.
Aye.
Mr. Volkey. Ms. Hummer.
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler.
Aye.
Ms. Radvian.
Aye.
Ms. Ledbetter.
Aye.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative, Amendment Number One has been adopted.
All right, Bill Number 6223 will be heard on September 18th, 2023. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill Number 6323.
Bill Number 6323, An Ordnance Concerning Construction and Property Maintenance Code Supplement Building Permit Exemptions Agricultural Buildings.
This is like farm evening, farm night on the council.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Ethan Hunt for the administration, with me is Andrew McCarrick from Office of Department of Inspections and Permits, and Lori Blair Klosmeyer from the Office of Law. This bill also comes from the Agricultural Commission and adds to and modifies the exemptions from building permit requirements for specified agricultural buildings, and modifies the definition of non-agricultural buildings under the construction code. Specifically, the bill expands the building permit exemption to cover structures for primary agricultural and value-added processing, all riding arenas, and all farm alcohol production facilities. Bill also modifies an exemption for farm buildings open to the general public to require specified approvals and allowed up to 200 people if certain conditions, such as fire inspections, are met, and clarifies that buildings located on properties without active farming operations in certain properties of less than five acres are not exempt from building permit requirements. There are no amendments to the bill from the administration, and we would ask you to adopt this bill tonight.
How often does that committee meet, that agriculture committee? Or whoever?
I'm not sure, the Ag Commission?
Lori Blair Klosmeyer, Deputy County Attorney, I'm not sure, their meetings are on the county website.
I understand.
Oh, they meet quarterly.
And so you take all of the recommendations that come from the commission and translate it obviously into legislative action if needed?
If needed, yes.
All right, I see, Madam Secretary, did we receive any testimonial, I don't see any lights, testimony through the online testimonial tool?
Yes, Mr. Chair, we had one submission for Bill Number 6323. Everyone here should have gotten a copy via an email, it is included in the summary that's posted online, and it will go into that meeting record.
Seeing no one who signed up to speak in advance, is there anyone in the audience who wishes to speak on Bill Number 6323 at this time? All right, seeing no movement, public hearing on Bill Number 6323 is now closed. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill Number 6323.
Bill Number 6323, An Ordnance Concerning Subdiv, I'm sorry, Construction and Property Maintenance Code Supplement Building Permit Exemptions Agricultural Buildings.
All right, any additional discussion? Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Amendment Number, I mean, I'm sorry, on Bill Number 6323.
Ms. Pickard.
Aye.
Mr. Volkey.
Yes.
Ms. Hummer.
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler.
Aye.
Ms. Radvian.
Aye.
Ms. Ledbetter.
Aye.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative, Bill Number 6323 has been passed.
Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill Number 6423.
Bill Number 6423, An Ordnance Concerning Subdivision and Development Zoning Boards, Commissions, and Similar Bodies, Parole Town Center, Parole Town Center Master Plan.
Mr. Barron.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm Pete Barron with the administration. Joining me at the table for this bill is Ms. Pampa, Mr. Hughes from OPZ, and I think Kelly Kenny is coming up from Office of Law for this one. Excited to bring this forward, this one has been a long time in the making. The bill repeals the 1994 Parole Urban Design Concept Plan and adopts the Parole Town Center Master Plan. This has been through a number of processes as OPZ has developed it. We have a quick PowerPoint, I'm going to turn it over to Ms. Pampa to give you the high-level summary of it. There are also a number of amendments coming, and we'll be ready to discuss them at the appropriate time.
Thank you very much, Mr. Barron. Chair Smith and members of the council, I'm very happy to be here tonight with Patrick Hughes. We have a very short... happy to be here tonight with Patrick Hughes. We have a very short presentation for you. Patrick is going to cover the master plan, and I'm going to cover the code. So I'll turn it over to Patrick.
Thank you very much. Patrick Hughes, Office of Planning and Zoning. And thank you for the opportunity to speak to you tonight. If we can go to the next slide, I'll give you a quick overview of the background. The Parole Town Center is, encompasses about 1,500 acres on the west side of the city of Annapolis boundary. The Parole Town Center has been designated as a town center since the 1978 General Development Plan, and it's been a place which encouraged the establishment and the growth of businesses, services, employment, higher-density residential, and the best possible transportation access, and mixed uses. That was from the '78 plan. The current master plan from 1994 includes a vision for mixed use, more residential growth, development intensity, urban compact and walkable development, and pedestrian connections, and it put in place some of the key features of the current regulatory framework that exists in the Parole Town Center. That town center designation was carried forward in the 2009 General Development Plan and also in Plan 2040 as an area that's targeted for development and investment to absorb the growth, some of the growth that would happen in other parts of the county where we want to remain lower-density, lower-intensity development patterns. Next slide, please. Very briefly, I'll go over the planning history for this update that's before you now. We actually started this back in 2017 with a project kickoff, a number of open houses, community questionnaires, and stakeholder interviews. The project was paused in early 2019 in order to allow for two important transportation studies to be undertaken, as well as to really allocate staff resources to the update of Plan 2040. But the multimodal transportation center feasibility study, that was one of the two transportation studies, and the outcome is the transit center that is in design now at the Westfield Mall. And then the parole mobility study was the second transportation study that provided some recommendations to inform the transportation network for the whole parole town center and extending over into the city. In 2021, we continued with the plan update, re-engaging the public, and incorporating some of the information from those two transportation studies, various questionnaires, and finally, we put out a preliminary draft plan in 2022, carried that through the Planning Advisory Board in that same year. Next slide, please. So some of the key draft recommendations that are in the plan that's before you now, a general cleanup of the boundary, the Parole Town Center boundary, to exclude sensitive environmental features and follow property lines, and one tweak from a Plan 2040 recommendation that had recommended about 44 properties on the south side of Best Gate Road to be included in the parole town center. We had subsequent community meetings with residents in that area, and following the expressed desire by those residents to remain residential over this planning horizon, we are recommending to remove that area from the parole town center boundary. We, the master plan does recommend keeping but simplifying the regulatory structure of three general tiers of density and retaining the zoning overlay with no changes to underlying zoning. Those changes would happen through the region plan process and the comprehensive zoning process there. We have updated the transportation plan for the parole town center with recommendations for roadway improvements, potential road connections, an expanded bicycle and pedestrian network, and these are largely based on that parole mobility study with some recommendations, again, that impact the city as well. And finally, there's a recommendation for an area-wide parking study to help us understand the need and potentially recommend changes in the future to parking minimums and some other parking standards. The master plan does recommend retaining the incentive program, which provides for some flexibility for development projects that come into the parole town center in exchange for community benefit that is over and above the standard regulations. Next slide, please. And the master plan does provide some recommendations for uses. I'm going to let Christina talk a little bit more about that as she goes through the code provisions. But uses do remain defined by the underlying zoning district with additional allowances and conditions applied by the zoning overlay. There are streetscape provisions recommending closer setbacks to promote a more urban character in the town center, and various other recommendations such as policies to expand housing opportunities, to enhance the sense of place in the area with activity and green space areas with our development, tree canopy, recommending a street tree master plan, and a number of other things that are in the master plan. But at this point, I will turn it over to Christina to talk more about the regulatory aspects.
Thank you, Patrick. Christina Pampa with the Office of Planning and Zoning. Laura, I'll take the next slide. So I have one slide to talk about the code provisions, and I'm going to try and be brief. I'm really going to just hit the highlights for you. As Patrick mentioned, there are three tiers of density for the parole town center. That is further broken into seven sub-areas. We have proposed eliminating the floor-area ratio and instead are going to rely on the bulk standards which determine how big a building can be being determined through the setbacks and building height, as well as other requirements such as open area, minimum parking, stormwater management, and natural features. Again, because it's a town center, most of the setbacks, which run between a minimum and a maximum for most of the sub-areas, start at zero feet, but there are two of them that start at 15 feet. That's in the gateway business mix and the defense highway corridor. There's more information on the seven sub-areas in pages 37 through 39 of the master plan. The maximum building heights are set for each sub-area, but there are reduced heights required where adjacent property outside the town center is residentially zoned. And, you know, Patrick just talked about that one area that is proposed to be removed. That would be an area that we're talking about. There are minimum open area required per sub-area, and at least 50% of the open area for any site must be provided as green area. Both of these terms are now going to be proposed in the code. And there's also a requirement for activity space, also defined in the code, but as you can imagine, that's where we want active uses going on. Site design and architectural requirements, we had put a draft out of the proposed code requirements last year. We had some site design and architectural requirements originally proposed in the code language based on recommendations from the Office of Law and how our code is normally structured. Those have gone back into the master plan. Parole relies on the landscaping manual for landscaping standards, but because this is a town center and our landscaping manual is very much suburban in nature, we have identified some areas where projects in parole would exempt out of the landscaping standards, but we have created some tailored landscaping standards that are in the master plan. As far as the uses are concerned, again, this is an overlay, so anything that's permitted, conditional, or a special exception in the underlying districts are automatically allowed. The great thing parole does is it allows all the uses that are allowed in the R-22 to be permitted or conditional or special exception per R-22 in the C-2, C-3, C-4, Town Center, W-1, W-2, and W-3 zoning districts. We do have some additional permitted uses named for parole, and there are additional conditions identified for some uses such as gas stations, self-storage, and auto truck and recreational vehicle sales. We have updated some conditions to be more appropriate for town center for specific uses, and we do provide for the mix of uses, but there are no percentages set. So again, we're relying on the market to identify when a mix of uses is going to be appropriate. There is a list of prohibited uses, except it exempts those uses that are already lawfully existing. So if there's an existing use, lawfully existing, and it's not going to be permitted in the new code, they can continue, and that's written in. We have added an inclusionary housing requirement for any project with 20 or more dwelling units must provide at least 10% of the units as inclusionary. Shifting to parking and modes of transportation and site access for parole, the parking requirements come straight out of Article 18, Title III. There is some special language that the mall may exempt from parking requirements if they have a planning and zoning officer-approved parking program. Parking programs are allowed in Article 18, Title III. That's a specific call out there. Structured parking is required for some uses when the parking provided exceeds one space per 200 square feet of floor area on sites greater than 1.5 acres, and I'm coming to the end of my list. Structured parking is required for multifamily projects with 100 or more dwelling units, and as you know, there are some projects going up right now along Reva Road. All of them are going to have a structured parking component. EV parking, electric vehicle parking spaces are required for some uses, and all of the EV parking that would be provided or required would count towards the total number of parking spaces. Bike and ped requirements are per the DPW Design Manual, and there is some language about site interconnectivity may be required to minimize direct access points on the main roads. Patrick touched on the fact that we are maintaining the incentive program. It allows for additional development capacity or other relief. Anybody that wants to use the incentive program has to file an application. We have evaluation criteria that are provided in the code update, and a list of potential but non-exhaustive public benefits is provided. That's always a question. You know, what, what can we do that would meet the incentive program? The planning and zoning officer may grant the application after considering the criteria and based on the public benefit. That is a very fast rundown of everything that is in this bill, and I know you may have more comments and obviously, or questions, and obviously, we are happy to answer them for you. Back to you, Mr. Barron.
Thank you, and seriously thank all the work, all the folks at OPZ that put in the many, many hours to develop this. Ms. Pampa referenced the plan itself. You can find that online. Council members should have been provided, can I hold this up for a second?
Oh, sure.
The, this document, that you should have a hard copy, and you can find it. Anybody from the public can find it online. So with that, we know there's some amendments coming, and some folks from the public maybe want to speak to it. So happy to answer any questions council members may have in the meantime. Yeah, ready to go.
I just have one. Ms. Radvian, what, this is holistically in District Six?
It's all in Six.
What's your interpretations or feelings about legislation?
Well, I think, first, I'd just like to say that, thank you to the Office of Planning and Zoning for literally years of work on this plan, and I can't even count the number of community engagement opportunities. Even through COVID, we were having Zoom meetings about the parole, previously the parole growth management area, now the parole town center, which rolls off the tongue a little easier. I think this is a great, will offer a great pathway for needed improvements for the parole town center, and, you know, something we've been talking about is transit-oriented development, and this is, I think, a model of transit-oriented development. So thank you to OPZ, and particularly Ms. Pampa and Mr. Hughes for your work on this. And, I mean, literally years in the making, coming to fruition with probably a few tweaks around the edges.
Any additional questions? Seeing none, we'll now open the public hearing on Bill number 6423. Madam Secretary, did we receive any testimony through the online testimonial tool?
We did not receive anything ahead of time, Mr. Chair.
Does anyone that signed up ahead of time, anyone wishing to speak on 6423 in the audience? See one member walking forward. All right, I will close after that one. If no one else is standing up, walking towards the two members, and then we're going to close. All right, please state your name and address for the record, and two minutes, sir.
Yes, good evening. David Plot with YVS Law, and I'm speaking on behalf of the Annapolis Mall, a client of ours, probably the largest property owner in the parole town center. And I know Ms. Bray had emailed some comments on the bill to the council members previously. Essentially, there are five points that we would like to make, and we do appreciate all the effort that planning and zoning has put into this bill because it's, it needs to be updated. It's a very old plan. It's in effect now. The first is that the mall, being largest property owner, we believe that even though we're classified now as being the parole north subarea, should be reclassified to the core area. That essentially, and it was stated in the letter to you, provides an option for greater height under the incentive program. It doesn't, because of the recent change in the bill, does not change the FAR, but it does provide flexibility with respect to open area requirements for, under the incentive program. So it just gives greater opportunity as the mall evolves and perhaps redevelops to take advantage of those opportunities. The other thing is we feel like tenant permits, just like under the site development plan process, are exempted, that they should be also exempted from the parole requirements for a tenant improvement permit, where you're just coming in to try to refill existing space. Also, the threshold, and Ms. Pickard's familiar with, you know, the Glenn Burney overlay, rather than being 50 trips to trigger road requirements, it's 250 trips. I think that's the same requirement in the Annapolis Town Center. The parole town center should have the same exemption from, from traffic studies. Now, with respect to the inclusionary zoning, inclusionary housing, or MPDUs, I think our comment would be first, it's, I think it's premature to put that into only parole without looking at it countywide as a bill. And I think there are a lot of issues with how do you provide affordable housing. It certainly is a goal that everybody has, but how do you accomplish that? I can tell you, I had one client already back out of redevelopment project in parole when I provided them the bill, just concerned about what is due to our pro forma for the project. And then, very briefly, finally, the structured parking on sites greater than 1.5 acres is a problematic requirement, okay, for a one-and-a-half-acre site, so we would like to see that amended also. I'm glad to have further conversations with council on these issues. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Johnson?
P.O. Box 6634, Annapolis, Maryland. I have been struggling with trying to figure out what in the world is going on with this, because my first, you know, slap in the face about, gee, there's a Region 7 and we're doing zoning, and gee, you know, where are the meetings, and who's telling anybody anything, was a February 6th meeting at the atrium, which is located on Best Gate Road, and I didn't get an invitation. The only way I found out about it was a couple of my neighbors called me and said, what do you know about this? Nobody knew anything, so we trundled off. And this was, of course, focused on the Ridgely Avenue corridor, but of course, that's part of Region 7. And I know there are people who have worked very hard on this, but I've gone to a lot of these meetings, and the turnouts are woefully inadequate. Even at the atrium where people received, oh, the county explained to me, well, we didn't send letters to anybody south of Route 50. You had to be north of Route 50 and east of Best Gate Road, and they sent out 380-some, I think, letters, and the rest of us were uninformed. And this is such a contrast to back in the days of the PGMA and, you know, all of that ancient history with doing this kind of work. There seemed to be a never-ending series of meetings and public forum, and we plastered Best Gate Road and Generals Highway and Defense Highway with signs for them, and they were held in different places. The ones that I went to were the ones at Annapolis Senior, and you got good turnout. At least people knew there was something going on. And I realized, one of the important factors was that was so long ago, nearly everybody subscribed to the Capitol newspaper. You could notify the public that way. Oh, but the trees, the, Annapolis Mall has the policy of chopping down trees when they get to be like about 10 years old, so you never get the canopy covering, you know, the asphalt. Well, because they want to show off the properties. No, well, I mean, this is contrary.
Please summarize.
I am concerned about you passing this if you're claiming that the public in the, in the neighborhoods have been adequately informed, because I, I really don't think they have. the neighborhoods have been adequately informed because I, I really don't think they have. You know, in my experience.
Thank you. Public hearing on Bill Number 6423 is now closed. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill Number 6423.
Bill Number 6423. An Ordnance Concerning Subdivision and Development, Zoning, Boards, Commissions and Similar Bodies, Parole Town Center, Parole Town Center Master Plan.
All right, please read Amendment Number One.
Amendment Number One. This technical amendment corrects typographical errors in sentence structure.
Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair. Just, obviously, we're against typos and hope you will pass this amendment. I, I do want to make a quick comment on, on some of the comments we heard in public testimony. The administration did receive some communication from Mr. Plot and others about some of their issues and changes in their, will be a meeting, and we'll be discussing some of them. We did not have time to include, I think the sponsor can, or the councilwoman from the, the area can agree, we haven't had time to fully review some of those comments to, to determine and craft them into amendments. But we do hear them and are taking them under consideration. That wasn't related to this amendment, so I apologize.
No, no, no.
Typos, sad. Please pass this amendment.
All right, is there a motion to adopt?
Motion to adopt, Allison Pickard.
Second.
Rovian, second.
All right. Any discussion on amendment? Seeing none. Madam Secretary, please call a roll on Amendment Number One.
Ms. Pickard.
Aye.
Mr. Volkey.
Yes.
Ms. Hummer.
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler.
Aye.
Ms. Rovian.
Aye.
Ms. Ledbetter.
Aye.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. Amendment Number One has been adopted.
Secretary, please read Amendment Number Two.
Amendment Number Two. This amendment adds four parcels into the parole town center in the Housley Road Village Subarea, which are known as Tax Map 45, Parcels 338, 351, 372, and 457, and are located on the west side of General's Highway from the current town center boundary north to the southern property line of a county-owned parcel containing a water tank, and revises the applicable maps and figures accordingly.
Ms. Rovian.
So, thank you very much. This actually, even though it's in, in the part of the plan labeled Housley, I think if you think of it better as the, the intersection of General's Highway, at that intersection where West Street becomes General's Highway, where Best Gate becomes Housley and vice versa, we're talking about that. If you know where the bowling alley is, I think that's a good landmark that a lot of people are familiar with. It's the property on the other side of General's Highway from the bowling alley. And one of the reasons that, this is going to be one of these, a picture is worth a thousand words if we look at this together. I think it'll make a lot more sense. But it is across, it is catty corner, it is basically catty corner from, or kitty corner, depending on where you grew up, from the, the forthcoming Transit Center that will be on the grounds of Annapolis Mall. It is across the street from parcels that are already part of the town center designation. And they, it is not a, it is developed, but it's not a subdivision. So it's got a lot of properties that will make it a good candidate for redevelopment, especially with, you know, I think one of the things this council has, I think, very aptly identified is the, the housing shortage that we're facing. And so, you know, having a, a space that may be possible for development into, you know, into some higher-density housing to help with the needs, that's also close to transit, I think is just a, a great opportunity to seize upon. So with that, I move to introduce motion, or excuse me, Amendment Number Two.
So moved.
Second, Allison Pickard.
Is the intent also to make sure, I know Ms. Johnson, I mentioned something about, you guys have Team Seven or smaller than Team Seven? Is that Annapolis? What smaller area plan is that?
So, yes, they are related, but I think it would be better for me to let Office of Law or Planning and Zoning respond to how they are connected.
Is this area, which smaller area team is this?
Hi, Christina Pompa with the Office of Planning and Zoning. So in the general development plan, which council adopted in 2021, it established nine region planning areas. This is in Region Seven, which is one of the first region plans. It's underway currently. That region, and that includes the Annapolis area, Annapolis neck, parole, uh, did I miss anything?
Highland Beach, Reva.
Yeah.
And the, and the intent obviously is to incorporate these changes that are in this master plan into Region Seven discussions as well?
So the Region Seven planning effort is also going to include comprehensive zoning. This parole master plan does not have a comprehensive zoning piece, so they are separate. There may be some zoning that you will see come through as part of Region Seven that relates to parole.
Sure.
But this is, this is very separate from the, the region planning effort.
Understood. Any additional questions?
Just for the record, the administration appreciates the sponsor sharing this amendment in advance and engaging in some discussions. We support.
Madam Vice Chair, see your light, your...
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just want to say, is there a missing middle opportunity here? Or a, a nice housing? I'm looking at it on the map, getting a little excited where we can...
Let's, let's talk. I think there's a lot of willingness to discuss, to discuss housing here. I do want to say though, because I have, actually, Ms. Corby, would you mind putting up the map? Let's make sure we're just, I think we're all on the same page. When I say across the street from the bowling alley, that probably gets 90% of the folks oriented here, but I just want to make sure that everyone's on the same page. Is this the map? Even me, it's hard to tell if this is the map that includes...
This is the current map.
Okay. Thank you. I wish I had a laser pointer. Can I, oh, I'm not even tall enough to get there. Okay, so if you look at the circle and you see that there is, you know, a, a road going sort of down into the left in the circle, and a road going straight up, oh, Patrick might be tall enough, and that's Housley and General's Highway, so close, so close. So, and instead of, I'm just going to use left, right, up, down, because we're looking at this on a piece of paper, or on a, this is not a paper, this is green. But it's to the left or the west of General's Highway, and it is north of or above Housley Road. So does that help clarify? And I want to make clear too, the, the northern boundary of the, this parcel is, you know, there's also, if you drive up General's Highway from Best Gate, where it crosses from West Street into General's Highway, on your left-hand side, there is a gigantic water tower that's been, what, how old is that? Maybe five, five, 10 years old? So that provides a significant buffer between what this addition would add and the existing subdivision to the north of, of the water tower. So there's a significant buffer that would, you know, kind of create a little bit of a screen for the neighborhood there. And it's also, it's already currently developed. This would be redevelopment.
Thank you.
So to me, this had all the, checked all the important boxes for becoming part of the parole town center, even though it is, you know, it does expand the borders. But considering the importance this council has noted on the need for housing in the county to not take the opportunity to put something that's catty corner from a, a forthcoming transit center would be unwise, in my opinion.
Any additional questions at this time? Seeing none. Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Amendment Number Two.
Ms. Pickard.
Aye.
Mr. Volkey is absent. Ms. Hummer.
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler.
Aye.
Ms. Rovian.
Aye.
Ms. Ledbetter.
Aye.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
Mr. Volkey has not returned. So that is six in the affirmative. One absent. Amendment Number Two has been adopted.
Bill Number 6423 will be heard on Sept, I think that's all the amendments, correct? All right. Will be heard on September 18, 2023. All right, Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill Number 6523.
Bill Number 6523. An Ordnance Concerning Zoning, Critical Area Growth Allocation for Property Located on Galesville Road in Galesville, Maryland.
Mr. Hunt.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, Ethan Hunt, for the administration. With me at the table is Lori Blair Klosmeyer from the Office of Law and Lynn Miller from the Office of Planning and Zoning. This bill is for the purpose of granting a critical area growth allocation to property that's owned by the Galesville Community Properties Incorporated by changing the designation of a little over half an acre of the property on the county's critical areas map from limited development area to intensely developed area and establishing requirements and limitations on the development of the property granted the growth allocation. This will support the goal of rehabilitating and restoring the historic Kohl's Store in the Galesville Commercial District, which the Galesville community has been advocating for a number of years now. We would ask that you pass this bill tonight. Thank you.
I guess, I got a question. Ms. Ledbetter, you, you familiar with this bill? This is your district?
Yes, it's in District Seven.
Did you have any thoughts on it?
The, most of the conversations I've had in the community have been positive and supportive.
Okay. All right. Any other discussions on Bill 6523?
I didn't ask this ahead of time, so if, I don't know if it's possible, but Ms. Corby, would it be possible to put the map for this? It's one of the exhibits, Exhibit A. I don't know if that's, if it's, if it's not, that's fine. But I would love to have someone just sort of explain visually.
All right, seeing no more discussion, we will now open public hearing on Bill Number 65. Oh, the map for, for this, okay.
Could, is, could someone sort of explain what's getting swapped here on the map? What, who, oh. I think we have a knowledgeable witness, but I...
Sure, I'll do that.
Mr. Chairman, I'm the, I'm the president of the Galesville Community Properties and have been spearheading this for the last three years. This is the C1 piece, we, we got the county code changed last year in order to allow smaller parcels to petition for growth, the non-residential parcels. And this is the only piece that we're doing, this C1 portion, which is a little bit less than a half an acre. So we were able to be included in, in the growth, and that's what this is, to allow us to change just this. Our footprint is already over the LDA limit, so we're restricted from doing anything until we got into compliance. So this was the county's solution, is that we should reclassify the IDA, and we were able to get that done. So if we go to IDA, then we'll be in the compliance, and that's, that's the whole part behind this. So that, that's just this portion.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. He was certainly excited. I saw his hand go, I was like, that's a guy, he's a smart guy. Just like with the last bill, what regional team is this? Is, is that seven as well? Or is that nine? Nine, when does nine meet?
Nine is, nine is in the second group of three, so that's one of the ones that's kicking off now.
And also, the intent is to communicate, obviously, this has been under works well before that team was, was sort of put together. So the outcome of this is the intent also to make sure that that team is, is aware of these pending or potential changes as well.
Sure.
Okay. I bring it up just to say, because I'm trying to be a, you know, obviously, when I get back on the council, the, the regional teams have always been like this footmark or placeholder of, of, of changes, this sort of vehicle to, to leverage those. And so my goal is to try to make sure if we're going to use these regional teams to plot out the path and the way forward for change within the areas, that we communicate everything that's going on, on those regional teams. So that, that's the reason I'm, I'm bringing that up. I just wanted to stress the importance of my commitment to keep them informed and to leverage the outcome of those meetings, those teams into legislation that we obviously vote on here at some point in the future. But that's why I bring it up. Seeing no additional lights, we'll now open the public, yeah, public hearing on Bill Number 6523. Madam Secretary, do we receive any testimony through the online testimonial tool?
Mr. Chair, there, we didn't receive anything ahead of time.
I didn't see anyone that signed up in advance. Is there anyone who wishes to speak on 6523 at this time? Of course he would. Love it. We're going to close the public hearing after this gentleman. I see no additional movement in the audience. Sir, over to you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and the rest of the, the council. This has been a long-term effort. We've had multiple community meetings, and the community is really excited to, to preserve this a little bit of history. It was falling into disrepair every year that went, went by. And it was, this is a community nonprofit was, was established to do this. It's going to remain a community property. For the community to decide the direction of this little piece. And it is in the historical Economic District, a little small one down at the, at the corner near the water. It's not up in the middle of where everybody lives, but this is a perfect place, a perfect community operation so that we can save this and bring a little life to that end of the Galesville Road. So the, the, the planning and zoning has been very supportive of this at, at each of the milestones that we've gone through, and the community is well behind this. So I encourage all's support of this. So let, let's just get over this hurdle, and we have one, one last hurdle, and then we'll be ready to go.
And what was your name again?
Jim Chandler.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, the public hearing on Bill Number 6523 is now closed. Madam Secretary, please read Amendment Number One.
I'm just going to read the title real quick since we closed out that public hearing. Bill Number 6523. An Ordnance Concerning Zoning, Critical Area Growth Allocation for Property Located on Galesville Road in Galesville, Maryland. Now we will jump to Amendment Number One. This amendment comports language in the bill to Section 18134052 of the County Code.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This is an administration amendment, just comports language to the current version. We would ask your support.
Does this impact, this Amendment Number One?
Not, not that I see.
I should say motion to adopt. Say motion to adopt.
Right.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right, now. You said what on the Amendment Number One? For Ms. Ledbetter. The reason I bring it up is it's her district. So trying to see how this impacts.
I would defer to Office of Law to answer that question best.
Lori Blair Klosmeyer, Deputy County Attorney. Yes, there was a change in the code on, on a bill from late in 2022 that was not in the last update. So that's what this amendment does, is fixes that language that was added by that bill.
Understood. Any additional question on Amendment Number One? All right, seeing none. Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Amendment Number One.
Ms. Pickard.
Aye.
Mr. Volkey.
Yes.
Ms. Hummer.
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler.
Aye.
Ms. Rovian.
Aye.
Ms. Ledbetter.
Aye.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. Amendment Number One has been adopted.
Madam Secretary, please read Amendment Number Two.
Amendment Number Two. This amendment makes the effective date of the bill contingent upon approval of the Maryland Critical Area Commission.
Mr. Hunt.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This is an administration amendment, making approval contingent on critical area approval. We'd ask for your support.
All right, is there a motion to adopt?
Rovian, so moved.
Second.
Ledbetter, second.
Any additional questions on Amendment Number Two? All right, seeing none. Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Amendment Number Okay, seeing none. Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Amendment Number Two.
Ms. Pickard?
Aye.
Mr. Volkey?
Yes.
Ms. Hummer?
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler?
Aye.
Ms. Rodvian?
Aye.
Ms. Ledbetter?
Aye.
And Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. Amendment Number Two has been adopted.
So Bill Number 6523 will be heard on September 18th, 2023.
Excuse me. Bill Number 6623, An Ordinance Concerning Zoning Outdoor Lighting on Piers.
Mr. Hunt? I'm sorry. Oh, I'm sorry. I think I was still distracted from the previous moments.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I believe it was the last council, perhaps it was this council, the, the years kind of blend together, that passed light pollution, a light pollution bill related to land. This bill extends that same idea to piers. Situation in my district where there was a pier that was upgraded, new lights were installed, and it is casting across the water into the properties of homeowners. So that is the impetus, and I ask for your support this evening.
Ms. Corby, may I be at as, at as a co-sponsor, please?
So noted. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Hunt?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, Ethan Hunt, for the administration. I have with me at the table Andrew McCarrer from Inspections and Permits, Lori Blair Klosmeyer from the Office of Law, and Lynn Miller from the Office of Planning and Zoning, who can illuminate you further on any ways this bill may, may function. We're happy to answer any questions.
Can you summarize, I guess, anyone from the table, exactly what's transpiring with the 6623 briefly?
Which is like...
I can, yes, with the sponsor?
Yeah, I think so.
I went short.
Essentially, what the bill does, it says if you have lighting on your pier, that the lighting must be directed downward horizontally to the ground, and not outward towards other properties, including those that are on the other side of the water.
My knowledge has been illuminated, so I'm good. Any additional questions on 6623? See your light?
This isn't a question, but this is just a comment to say, as a person who is very fond of birds and concerned about their continuing existence in our world, this is also a really valuable bill for, for birds who are navigating their way up and down the East Coast in migration, and have, that darkness is really helpful. So that's one of, I also don't like blinding light in my face either. So thank you for bringing this bill.
We're treating able to migrate here to this council chamber every single day, so we're grateful for that. Had to get it in there. Any, any additional questions on 6623? All right, seeing none, we'll now open the public hearing on Bill Number 6623. Madam Secretary, do we receive any testimony through the online testimonial tool?
Mr. Chair, we did not receive anything ahead of time.
I don't see anyone that signed up in advance. Is there anyone in the audience who wishes to speak on Bill Number 6623 at this time? Seeing no movement, the public hearing on Bill Number 6623 is now closed. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill Number 6623.
Bill Number 6623, An Ordinance Concerning Zoning Outdoor Lighting on Piers.
Right. See, there are amendments. Please read Amendment Number One.
Amendment Number One. This amendment adds a cross-reference to the code section that applies to piers, and adds a definition of full cutoff fixture.
Ms. Fiedler?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So a full cutoff fixture is industry speak for exactly what that does, and, and that was an effort to clarify, because we, this council, the administration likes definitions, I think. We also had a lot of discussion about the appropriate place for this language to land, because we do have a section specifically for piers and moor pilings, mooring pilings, and we also have section, a section regarding outdoor lighting. So this was a friendly compromise to have it where Office of Law both preferred and where I preferred with a cross-reference.
So motion to adopt?
Motion to adopt.
Second?
Second, Allison Pickard.
Mr. Hunt?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The administration is fine with this amendment.
Any additional question on Amendment Number One? Seeing no lights. Please read, I'm sorry, please call the roll on Amendment Number One.
Ms. Pickard?
Aye.
Mr. Volkey?
Aye.
Ms. Hummer?
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler?
Aye.
Ms. Rodvian?
Aye.
Ms. Ledbetter?
Aye.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. Amendment Number One has been adopted.
Secretary, please read Amendment Number Two.
Amendment Number Two. This amendment incorporates language added by Amendment Number One, and provides that outdoor lighting used to illuminate the U.S. flag is excluded from the installation requirements for outdoor lighting on a pier.
Ms. Fiedler?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This is really just a clarifying amendment. Some folks do have the United States flag located somewhere on their pier, and obviously, that illumination is not directed downward, but rather upward. So I wanted to make sure that there were no unintended consequences for those who have the United States flag located on their pier.
All right.
Motion to adopt.
Second? Rodvian, second. Any additional, Mr. Hunt?
The administration is fine with this amendment as well.
Any additional comments on Amendment Number Two? Mr. Volkey?
Are you only allowed to illuminate the American flag?
I believe, and I could be wrong, but that is the only flag required to be illuminated.
So then, does this preclude other flags from being illuminated? Like, if I had another flag and I wanted to illuminate it, but I'm not required under sign etiquette, or flag etiquette, excuse me, to do it, am I precluded from doing it?
I guess that, I would defer to the Office of Law, but it sounds like you may be.
Lori Blair Klosmeyer, Deputy County Attorney. I think the way it's written, any other illumination would have to face downward.
Any additional comments?
I just, we've had a lot of flag discussions in this council, so I'm just curious. I'm just asking, because this has come up before. I've been told that I'm not respecting enough flags, so I'm asking this question.
So, so the Maryland flag too would, would obviously fall into this category?
Yes, this is a specific United, specific United States flag. So anything else, any other lighting, would come, come under all the other provisions.
Sure. All right.
Yep. The American flag is, and the flag code, it is required if you fly it at night, or it is recommended that it be eliminated, but I don't think any other one is. If we're looking to decrease the light pollution, that's a good limit to have. It's just the American flag, and my, my thoughts on it, yep.
Mr. Volkey?
I just want to confirm. So we're treating the American flag differently in this instance? Well, never mind. I've made my point.
All right, seeing no additional comments. Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Amendment Number Two.
Ms. Pickard?
Aye.
Mr. Volkey? Ms. Hummer?
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler?
Aye.
Ms. Rodvian?
Aye. And just clarifying that any flag can still be flown on one's pier.
Aye.
Ms., uh, thank you, Ms. Rodvian. Ms. Ledbetter?
Aye.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. Amendment Number Two has been adopted.
Bill Number 6623 will be heard on September 18th, 2023. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Resolution Number 2923.
Resolution Number 2923, Resolution Approving the Determination of Certain Improved County-owned Property Being Part of Brooklyn Heights Park in Baltimore, Maryland as Surplus Property.
All right, Mr. Hunt?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Ethan Hunt, for the administration. With me at the table are Bill Heiser and Kyle Roof from Anorundal County Public Schools, Christopher Daniels and Marnie Wilson from Real Estate, Bruce Burchi from Department of Recreation and Parks, and Lori Blair Klosmeyer from the Office of Law. This resolution approves the determination of .682 acres of county-owned property, which is part of Brooklyn Heights Park, as surplus property. According to Maryland Department of Assessments and Taxation, this area is part of an approximately 21-acre property with an assessed value of $1.5 million as of July 1st, 2023. The assessed value of the .682 acres will not be determined until it is appraised for disposal. The property is considered improved due to the presence of a concrete structure similar to a curb, and this property is being surplus to the school system for expansion of a school.
All right, any additional questions on Resolution 2923?
Just, for the record, which school are we looking, are we?
So?
Thank you.
For the record, he did say Park Elementary School, correct? All right, seeing no additional comments, we'll now open the public hearing on Resolution 2923. Madam Secretary, do we receive any testimony through the online testimonial tool?
We did not receive anything ahead of time, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. I didn't see anyone signed up in advance as well. Is there anyone who wishes to speak on Resolution 2923? All right, seeing no movement, the public hearing on Resolution 2923 is now closed. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Resolution 2923.
Resolution Number 2923, Resolution Approving the Determination of Certain Improved County-owned Property Being Part of Brooklyn Heights Park in Baltimore, Maryland as Surplus Property.
Right. Real quick, what, and what is the school intend on doing with the land? Just curious.
What was the question?
What, what does the school intend, school system intend on doing with the additional land?
This would be a four to six classroom addition that would be put on Park Elementary.
Which is in my district, so I definitely approve. Thank you. Because Park is actually at, at, at capacity. They're busting at the seams over there.
Correct.
All right, any final discussion? All right, seeing none. Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Resolution Number 2923.
Ms. Pickard?
Aye.
Mr. Volkey?
Yes.
Ms. Hummer?
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler?
Aye.
Ms. Rodvian?
Aye.
Ms. Ledbetter?
Aye.
And Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. Resolution Number 2923 has been adopted.
All right, is there any other business to be brought before this county council at this time? Seeing no lights, may I motion to adjourn?
So moved, Allison Pickard.
Your second?
Second, Ledbetter.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. The county council is adjourned until September 12th, 2023, at 9:00 a.m.
No, not 12th, the 18th.
No, we have a work session.
Oh, we have a work session. It's like, don't tell me we have a...